Good evening, everybody. Mr. Canales, are you able to plug in please?
Ms. Calvez.
Here.
Ms. Carasola.
Here.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Hayward.
Present.
Ms. Calvez. Ms. Carpelli.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Rendell.
Here.
Dr. Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Calvez, are you able to lead us in the applause here, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Stevenson, are you able to read the mission statement?
The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education, in partnership with the supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Adequate notice of meeting in accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231. Notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record and the Ridgewood News on October 15th, 2024. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the Borough Court and was posted on the Holloson Board of the Board of Education Office in the Administration Building on the same date. All right. I would like to say thank you all for spending some time with us, having us get an opportunity to get to know you, as well as even just volunteering to put yourselves in a position to be on the Board of Education. It is a challenge, and showing up and being here tonight was really appreciated and showing just some dedication to the community. So, thank you. The way that tonight is going to go, since we, you know, determined on how many candidates we had and things like that, we were trying to figure out a good way to just get a sense of who you are as a person, some of the things that you find important, what your understanding of the Board is, and like just general information like that. So each of us will direct a question to you, and we won't make the same person answer the question, like be the first person or the last person every time. It will rotate, just, you know, for equity, to make sure that everyone, you know, has the equal ability to, you know, prepare their responses, and we'll go through it that way. All right? Are there any questions about anything before we begin?
Are you still able to press the button?
Yes, yes. So the red, it'll be red when it's off, and then when it's your turn, which you may forget, and we'll remind you. Just press the button to activate the mic, and then feel free to speak. All right? All right. Any Board members have any questions before we begin?
I think the only thing, and maybe you mentioned it to them prior, was there is no time limit. It's not like you have, yes, six seconds.
Yeah.
But, you know, be aware that there's eight if you have eight questions and five people, right?
Thank you for mentioning that, Ms. Carasola. We didn't want you to feel like, you know, super pressured to answer within a certain amount of seconds and things like that. I would ask that we be brief, you know, in your responses to get to the meat of what you're saying, but at the same time, if you feel like you need a couple seconds to like gather yourself and put together your thoughts before you start speaking, that's perfectly, you know, understandable.
So just to say, looking at this sheet, it looks like everything's in the order of left to right, so whoever we start with, it'll be the next person to the right next, so you can sort of mentally prepare yourself for when you're coming up. So it makes it a little easier.
Yes. And then, as each trustee says, the question, if you can, you know, just in case, like you can also prompt the next person, like it would be...
Who should answer?
Yeah, who should answer next, just so that that maybe becomes more apparent over time. All right? Are we ready to begin? All right. Ms. Calvez.
Okay, first question. What motivated you to seek the open position on the Glen Rock Board of Education?
Thank you for, thank you for the invite, and thank you for the question. What motivated me to, I served Board of Ed for 12 years. I think I know all the process procedures, took all the training. I had no intention to run for the Board of Ed. This opportunity came, and I thought, well, you know, maybe with my experience, I can be an asset to help for a year and move forward. That's about it. I, you know, I love this town. I've been living here for twenty, 22-plus years, and I, I like the school district, what you guys have done, what we have done, and I want to make sure it moves forward. If there is a gap in between, we lose board member for different reason. I think somebody should step in, and thank you for all these members just stepping in. I have, I just have the experience being serving on the Board, and these guys have courage to stand up and come here. So that's all, nothing, nothing special.
Casper, what motivated you to seek the open position on the Glen Rock Board of Education?
Great, thanks for the question. Yes, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Casper. I am a 20-year resident of Glen Rock. I've had four children go through the schools. Two are currently seniors, senior twins. I had one child graduated in 2021, and one in 22. So I've been involved in the school district for a long time. I had a child that started in the three program in special services, and the rest started in kindergarten. So I've been a member of the district for a long time. In addition, I have six nieces and nephews. So I have a vested interest with one who's graduated in 2023. So I have a vested interest, obviously, in the district. It's provided a ton of opportunities to my children, to our family, and I've been involved in a lot of different roles, sort of in the background more, obviously, as a cheerleader for my children and their education, and I feel as though it's time for me to give back. I feel as though it's time for me to use the experiences I've had as a family and my children have had to bring those to the table, to, you know, bring the district to the next level, and, you know, in addition, as I've sidetracked raising four kids, I run a couple businesses, and I'm running a swim school business right now that is, you know, very similar, as I look at it, because it's always focused on the end product, if you will, which is the child, the swimmer, or the student. And everything starts from the bottom, in my opinion. So, you know, I've really been working a career around children in a different sort of capacity. So I feel like that experience, I bring that to the table and like to give back.
Hello. Thank you for having us here today and for this interview process. I am excited to be here and to interview for this position. I was motivated to do so, just same reason as expressed, was to give back to the community. I really love Glen Rock very much. I have four children, and all of them have been through the school system. Three of them are currently in the school system, two are in high school, one's in middle school in sixth grade. Three of them went through Hamilton, one through Coleman. I had a unique difference that I actually moved out of Glen Rock for five years for my husband's job. We moved to South Jersey. I, if anyone who knows me, they knew that I left Glen Rock kicking and screaming. I did not want to go. I was very upset with my household. We went down to South Jersey, and I took the first opportunity, thanks to COVID, actually, and working virtually, to come back to Glen Rock. I really wanted to move back here. It was very important to me to raise my kids here. It was very important to me to be a part of this community. So I moved back, and I have just been more involved and paying attention and seeing what's going on, and I really wanted to get more involved on this level. I feel like I have a lot to bring to the Board. I have a marketing background. I have an economics degree from Columbia and an MBA from Michigan, and I feel like I can help with the budget side, I could help with communication side. I just am very enthusiastic, and I want to bring a lot to the table here. And overall, it's just, you know, I think this is a very, this is a job that's, you have to love it, and it's a lot of work, but it's, it's for the love of the kids and the community. Thank you.
Mr. Tang.
Hi. For start, little introduction, my name is probably hard to pronounce, and my friends all call me Joe. I have a couple of friends here, so feel free to call me Joe. It's close to Joe, close enough. I moved here since 2010, so it's been a while. My son Leo is born here, friends, we set up kids here. He's in eighth grade now, playing on a middle school soccer team. Everything's great. My daughter is in high school now, so, yeah, I just, similar to others, I really want to have opportunity to contribute back to the community. My, I think my, my experience brings, I feel, why I'm probably a little different working experience than most people. I work in tech industry. I work at big tech companies, I work at Amazon, Facebook, Uber's company. So I, I feel like it's important for, for an education system, at this day and age, to have a very strong perspective from technology, like the AI, the whole of the world. I, I learn from my kids, there's very strict rules on how to use AI in a school. I have kind of my, you know, my own opinion as well, so I just want to be able to bring my perspective. Plus, I love to contribute to education. My parents were teachers, I'm not, but I'm a part-time teaching at Rutgers, so I'm still a part-time teacher. So I would love to bring my experience to help whatever I can.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Brown. I have lived in Glen Rock since 2007, and like all the others on this panel, I would like the opportunity to serve the community. And, and, you know, in addition to doing that, I think it's a great opportunity to become a more informed member of the community and to be able to participate in decisions that will help improve the schools, move them forward. I have two kids in the school district now, and I think that it's a great place to learn, and I just want to keep progress moving forward.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Just to reiterate, thank you so much for your interest in joining us. So my question is, how have your personal and professional experiences prepared you to serve on the Board of Education? And we'll start with Ms. Casper.
Yes, thank you for the question. I, you know, I think I touched on that a little bit in the opening statement, but my personal experiences have been excellent. You know, we've had an excellent educational experience with all four of my children here. So we've had a lot of different type of learners, or I've had a lot of different type of learners. So I've had, you know, a child in special services with an IAP. I've had children excelling at different activities, different, you know, subjects, if you will. So I've touched on the whole gamut personally with, with four different kids coming through the schools. I've also seen, you know, a lot of different principles, a lot of different policies, just a lot of change. And I think my family's always adapted to it well, so I think I've learned from that experience, and my kids have adapted to them well. You know, we obviously had four teenagers during COVID, so there was a lot of personal experiences that we leaned on the school for, and the school helped us with during those times. The, you know, professional, as I said, I've had a 30-year career at this point, from the fashion industry to the real estate world to the swim school business. And I've, now as my own business owner, we own three swim schools, we employ 150 people throughout two states. You know, I understand the dynamics of running an efficient business. In my opinion, schools, it's, it's a business in a lot of ways, it's an educational business. So there's budgets involved, there's, you know, staffing issues, there's student issues, there's a lot of different pieces to come together. And in that regard, I think I've learned to be a great negotiator, a good listener, a common sense decision maker, and those are just skills I've learned along the way in my different aspects. And again, as I just reiterate, it's always going back to the customer, to our children, to our, you know, our students. And that's where I feel as though if your focus is there, then all the stakeholders can work together in their best interest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want me to repeat the question?
I, yeah, okay. Why not?
How have your personal and professional experiences prepared you to serve on the Board of Education?
Thank you. I'll start with the professional side. I think no matter what job you have in life, whether you're a clerk at Target or whether you're CEO of a company, you learn the same things when you start working for anyone, which is you have to work hard, you work to get the job done, and you have to work well with others. I have always been a very data-driven person. I usually spend too much time diving deep, but I like to research what I'm speaking about, and throughout my job currently, I've, I've, in the past, done marketing since I graduated, and different companies, and now I have my own business for the past 17 years. I run an e-commerce business, and I'm dealing with different vendors, I'm dealing, there's just many different facets that you pull in, and I think all those lead to the same result, which is you're, you know, results-oriented, and that's how it is on the Board as well. On a personal side, I will say what's motivated me and what brings me to want to, did you say your assets, was it? The... What prepares me? I'm going to say my family, and it's not my children that I have, but it's more, my, my mother was a teacher, my mother was also on the Board. I felt like she was on the Board my entire childhood. She was always gone, and she was very dedicated to the cause, and I saw that as a role model. And I would say my grandfather was a very big influence in my life. He was an immigrant from Greece. He never had the opportunity to have, have any schooling beyond fourth grade. It was his biggest dismay in life. He had, had political situation in Greece, he had all his, his money taken away from him, and he always said to us, I mean, almost every single time I saw him, was, you know, the world can take away your wealth, it can never take away your education, and education is your armor. And his biggest dream in life was, the American dream for him was not coming here and making money, it was putting his son and his grandchildren through college. That was his biggest dream. He was crying at all his grandchildren's graduations, and he instilled in me a love for education. I, I, when I went through college, I realized how privileged I was, and I saw how much education can do for children. Whether you end up in college or anywhere you go, education gives, opens the doors. So on a personal level, that's, that's how I, my perspective is from a personal level. Thank you.
I'll go push the button. All right? I remember the question. So I'll first go about professional experience, how does that help? I think I kind of brought up a bit what I do, my professional experience. I think most relevant is, I think, I've been, I'm working in a large company, collaboration with many people for a long time. I've been in the leadership position. I lead about 50 people organization, so I've, I've spent a lot of time thinking about how to grow people's career, including interns, college graduate. I spend a lot of time coaching them. I think that, that's, that's relative, relevant experience. I touched upon, I, I spend time teaching at Rutgers, so every Monday night, I would drive an hour, because there's two classes per week, but because I have long drives, so I made like three hours Monday night, so the kids have sit in the classroom for three hours from 5:40 to 8:40. I give a break in between, but then 8:40 class finished, I drive home. I do that for Monday night. Because I really enjoy be able to work with, with this college kid to see how they grow to be able to teach. Yeah, that's my professional experience, I would say. Personally, I've been in Gronk for 14 years, my, both my children grew up here. I've been, I'm not particularly good at any sport, but my kids has enjoyed playing lots of sports. I've been like kind of part-time daddy coach, a lot of them, because my coach, my daughters' rec soccer team until they don't have a team anymore. Like high school, they don't have a team anymore. It ends at middle school. I coached my sons' little soccer teams a bit, baseball, he played a couple years, rec, basketball, one year, rec. Unfortunately, they both stuck with hockey, and I can't skate, so I never coached them on hockey. So, yeah, that's my personal, I also want to say, I think I'm a little bit different here, also because I'm a first-generation immigrant. I moved to this country when I was 22, 22, so at this point, I spend a little bit more time in the States than China, so it's great. So, yeah, I feel like, I also feel I bring a little bit diversity to a, a group who's making the difference in the community, I think it's important, right? I do see, there are not a lot, but some, like Asian community, first generi, my generation immigrants, and most of us are usually not very active on this kind of positions, myself included. I've never tried before, but I feel, I feel, I feel it's, it's healthy for me to bring my personal experience into the Board like this, like add a little diversity, and selfishly kind of also as an example for my kids to see, you know, you can be more active in this community as well. So that's, that's me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm good. So I, my, the professional experience I bring to the table is, I've been a lawyer for 20 years. My firm, we serve private clients, it's a sophisticated, demanding clientele. My job as their counselor is to really listen, to ask questions, to figure out what their goals are, to help them resolve some conflicts. Sometimes that's intra-family, sometimes it's conflicts with, you know, other business owners or things like that. So really, the skills that I could bring to the table is understanding how to listen, how to ask the right questions, how to help figure out what a solution is, a solution that's not necessarily my solution or your solution, but the right solution. And, and so really, problem solving is the name of my game every single day. In addition to that, if I've been a partner for the past four years in that role, I have to help manage the firm. That's a lot of staffing decisions, a lot of HR policymaking, and so, you know, that's in a nutshell what my day-to-day is. In addition to that, for the past year, I've served on the Board of the Sea Turtle Conservancy. It's a nonprofit, 65-years-old, based in Gainesville, Florida. It's based, its, its mission is to deal with research, education, advocacy relating to sea turtles. We have research facilities in Costa Rica, Panama, Florida, and in water in the Caribbean as well. So it's, it's been a great experience, learning the ropes, serving that Board, you know, having the oversight role. It's a well-run Board, so I haven't had to deal with too much conflict, but I'm on the Endowment Committee, and we're really trying to figure out capital campaigning and things like that, and it's been a really great growth. From a personal's perspective in the district, I served as a class parent for almost, I think, every year. My kids were in elementary school, maybe, except kindergarten for my older one. I volunteered here and there where I had time and the ability to do so, and so, you know, I, I think I coached some rec soccer here or there, but dealing with the kids, I love working with kids, and I like, you know, figuring out what's great for the kids and what will help enrich their experience.
Well, let's start with the professional experience. I've, I've been in IT for over 27-plus years. I have managed a large-scale project that spanned from 20 to $35 million. I'm a program manager. I work, I make sure the large-scale teams focus on delivering the deliverable that people are expecting. I also served on the Glen Rock Board, as I said, for last, for 12 years, and I only had, I had few goals in mind, and I think the district still focus or should focus on the, on the same goals, to keep the district moving. One is keep, you know, always put student first. Think, you know, think about the whole child approach when it comes to education, whether you are a regular child, advanced, advancing, or special education or something. We need to address every single student that we have. That means we need to work on the curriculum, the teachers, the, the help they might need in the classroom. I also believe that the school district, we should also provide good tools and training to the teachers so they can effectively follow the policies, regulations passed by the school Board to make sure we are moving ahead in our rating, in the math scores and English scores, language. I work with four superintendents and two interim superintendents. I have been involved in hiring educational people, for example, the high school principal, the reconfiguration of the schools. So there's a lot of experience I gained being on the, on the Board. It was difficult, a lot of time that you have to spend to learn the process procedure to make sure we, as a Board, make policies only, not get involved in, you know, you know, firing of the teachers, or this thing is not working. Our job is to make the policies, and that's the thing I learned after spending, serving 12 years this district. I think another of the highlight that I have is like, we, when we joined the Board, there were only two languages we used to offer, French and Spanish. I was instrumental introducing Mandarin to the school district. It took a couple of years, but we got there, because I think you have to believe that you need to provide opportunities to every single student, and that's the goal, and that's what I bring to the table professionally and with my experience, how to keep the school district moving in the right direction.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. So moving on to our third question. Ms. Palamas, starting with you. What are your thoughts on the current state of education in our district? What are your thoughts on the current state of education in our district?
Thank you for the question. The district right now is in a little bit of flux. I think that there's, there's a lot of great things happening. It's a very exciting time. There's, there's so many different elements that have been happening and different, I actually just watched the board retreat and I thought it was, there were so many ideas happening, such as being, the board wants to be board certified and best policies. One of the things though, that I think that I saw that was concerning, there's a little bit of a lack of faith that has been happening between the citizens and the public and the board. I would hope to restore some of that goodwill, that the community facing goodwill. And it's not from lack of anything that's happening, it's more from, a lot happens in the board and in the background that the public doesn't see. There's so much work that's done behind the scenes, scenes. And, you know, I think a lot of it is, if, maybe communication-wise out to the public for what's going on with all the great progress that's been made. If you look at the meeting minutes just from September, when, before school started, there's so, there was so much happening that is put into place to set for a good school year. There was, there's, happens to be, there's a lot of different clubs that were created. One of my concerns was with middle school and if they have a great, robust education there, like in terms of their identity. And I saw there was a lot of different clubs that were approved, which I loved. I thought that, you know, there, there's just the school, the curriculum has been reviewed and it was, it was a great curriculum that, you know, people don't realize the breadth and the depth that goes into planning it. And I have the utmost respect for the board when I saw how much planning goes into it. And so I think overall, there's a climate survey that was recently done to take intake for the teachers. I know there's been a lot of discussion around and concern over teacher retention. And it's valid, you know, it's a valid concern that needs to be addressed by the public and, I'm sorry, by the board. And I think the board is actually, you know, doing so, but the, you know, it, when you take a climate survey, you can get a good angle. When you talk to the teachers, you can get a good perspective of what's happening. And they'll, you know, it's, when you ask people how they are and what they're doing, you find out. So asking the students, hearing more from the public and how, you know, the public, what they want to hear, the parents, what they want to hear. So it's a lot of communication pulling together and I think that's the one link and that needs to have a little bit more emphasis on. But overall, there is the number of things in this town, there is a reason that this town is, has a tradition and excellence, is so well-respected, is the strength of the community. I mean, there's, I don't, I went to a back-to-school night last year and the teacher was so, she was remarking about how wonderful, she was a new teacher, and she was remarking how wonderful it was to see the whole classroom filled with parents. And it struck me that not every school district has parents that show up in full for these schools, for their parents. And, you know, I have never not gone to a back-to-school night because it just wasn't in my repertoire to do that. Of course, I'd want to see who my parents, who my kids' teachers are. But not every district is like that. This is a town that is full of engaged parents. And, you know, it's, it kind of can make the, some challenges, but it's great opportunities. This is a community that's very engaged. Parents are very savvy. They know, you know, they know, they know every, you can see everything and it's, it's wonderful. It's an asset to have in our community to have such engaged parents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stein, want me to repeat the question?
I remember the question. Yeah, my, my opinion, I think the school is fantastic. As I said, I grew up in China, I went to school there. I can't, I couldn't even dream what are my kids' school are, like the things we have here. I just, I feel really happy for them, like we have, like the four, four languages we have, amazing. Like they, they, when the kids are a little bit ahead, they have, probably have program for them. When kids behind, we have program for them. We have like the middle school soccer team practice every, every day after school. My daughter used to be on middle school volleyball team, they practice every day at school. Just everything is taken care by the school district, the school of teachers. I think it's amazing. I don't, personally, I don't have many complaint. I just want to try to help, help as much as I can. If I, yeah, if I, if I, if I could add, add value to, way to change things, as I, as I talked about earlier, I do think, you know, that at this time, with community technology, with AI technologies evolving so fast, I think it's not, not a threat for the leaders to think about what we do as school district to evolve education of our children, children to make sure they can, like, be competitive when they grow up. I think we should, in my opinion, think more about that. For example, I looked at my, my kids, their, their computer, computer classes they're taking in middle school, in my opinion. Like other classes they take, like history, whatnot, like humanitarian classes they take, was really pretty close to the adult version, but it's just a little easier. But those computer classes, I feel it's like a, like a Lego kitty version, not at middle school level, in my opinion it should be. Not complaining, but this is something I'd like to, love to be able to contribute to. Yeah, again, not, not many complaints. Can I keep the high school hobby? That's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Brown?
Yeah. So I think I said earlier, generally, I think first and foremost, I'm thrilled to send my kids to school here every day and have been since they were in kindergarten. And I think that's at the core, and I would say, most parents would probably feel that way. I know there are always vocal parents who come out and say negative things and I do think the board does such hard work every day, the staff does such hard work every day, and I think that goes probably underappreciated, under and recognized, so thank you all. But I think, you know, the teachers my kids have had range, you know, generally from good to great, are there outliers for sure. And to what Christine said, I would say absolutely, like how do we bolster teacher retention and keep those teachers who are on that good to great spectrum, especially those on the great spectrum? So there's always room for improvement, right? But it's a great school district. It's a great place for the kids to learn, to become great citizens. And I think there's a lot of opportunities here for kids to learn about community, learn, you know, on top of the academics. There's a lot of opportunities to travel, to do activities in the elementary schools, to do dance programs and things like that. And I think that's just a great thing about our district and I would imagine not every district and public school systems is like that. But yeah, room, there's room for improvement where are those things, teacher retention, communications, transparency where there can be. Obviously, there has to be discretion on the board, but where can their discretion meet transparency and, and preserve privacy and everything that's necessary? But generally, it's great.
Thank you.
Then will you repeat the question a little louder, please?
I'd be happy to. What are your thoughts on the current state of education in our district? Can I echo?
Okay. Look, both my kids went through Glen Rock Public School System and received solid education, math, science, sports. My son was a golf co-captain here. So I, I think the school, the curriculum is fine. I think we have a good teachers here, working hard, making sure kids get all the information as per the curriculum defined by the board and the, and the New Jersey Board of School. And the evidence for that is recently, the Hamilton School got the blue ribbon school. So we're definitely doing something right, right? In 2018, you know, this is what I was, I carried this badge with me, 2018, the Glen Rock High School got blue ribbon. So I think the fundamentals are strong. There's no need to panic, hey, your district is going south or something like that. I think maybe we need to look at maybe the tools that teachers are looking for, some training that they might require because the, every year, New Jersey Department of Education, they change and hence they add, subtract some of the curriculum. And for that, our teachers to be effective, I think we need to invest in, in their training and retraining and some educational activities. I don't think there's, the challenge is why that there, that nothing that we cannot overcome. Communication, yes, I'm hearing from, from, from the, from the town, a lot of parents that communication is an issue. But that can be, that, that can be resolved, that, that can be overcome. You know, we, as a board, we work together, we make sure we, we have a trust among the board members. We can come and ask policies, we can have discussion with the, with the superintendent, the board secretary, how to improve that. I, I think this is very, the school district is great. Teachers, we, we have great teachers, curriculum is strong, students are very passionate to take more AP courses. I think the rating has gone down in the recent, you know, years, but that is much more administrative kind of a issue than, hey, your curriculum is not good, hey, your teachers are not good. So I think those can be overcome. We just need to work, board needs to work together, work with administrator, work with the superintendent, what needs to done, communicate to the public, here's the problem, here are the challenges, these are the steps we are taking. That's about it, you know? I, I tell that my team all the time, you know, no matter how good the team is, if you're not solving the right problem, then we are setting up ourselves for failure. Maybe we need to address the right challenges, the problem, the issues this district is facing, and then take the corrective actions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Casper?
Yes, so, you know, it's, it's a tough question, to be honest, because I think everybody would answer that question quite differently, where they are in their educational experience with their own children at the moment, or if they're out of the, finished with the district, sort of what they're hearing, or I think, you know, personally, I, you know, I, with the, the school district has done great things by my family. So our kids have thrived in the district with the resources they've been given. That's not to say that there hasn't been a lot of changes of late. You know, curriculum's changing, supervisors are changing, teachers are changing, COVID's changing. You know, things are moving, moving, moving. And some children thrive in that environment, some administrators thrive in that environment and some don't. So I think that has, you know, it's resonated with some people that possibly their child is getting lost in some of these changes, possibly their math scores are not keeping up, they're not getting in the AP class, this, you know, this teacher is not working with, you know, to their abilities. The special education needs are higher than they were, you know, when my kids started the school district. So the reality is, it's always evolving. And, and that's the challenge, I would imagine, as a board member, is that, first of all, you're not going to be able to fix every single child's needs, although you can try. But that's, it's, it's a tough task and also, you know, things are changing quickly. You talk about technology, you talk about, you know, bringing new languages, there's always a new, new thing. So at some point, I guess you have to sort of sit back and see what's working and what's not working. I know there's a lot of, there's a review going on right now, the CUSAC or something, I was listening to it the other night, review of the schools. There's other ratings. So there's checks and balances, which is good. And I think the board just has to be engaged to listen, you know, to listen to the concerns, to listen to the reviews, to listen to the ideas. You know, I go back to the teachers being at the forefront. They are really the eyes and ears of the school and, you know, compensation's one thing, but I truly believe in, you know, culture and working environment, it goes hand in hand. I think you need the whole package for the teachers to be satisfied and to really keep everybody engaged because, you know, they're, they're the ultimate people that are with our children. So, you know, so am I positive about the school district? Of course. That, I would not be here if I was not positive about it. And am I excited about it for the future? Yes, but I think there's obviously still work to be done internally and with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. That's my question, Ms. Hayward.
Okay, I think I'm up. Okay, my question's pretty straightforward for all of you. How do you measure the success of a school district? And Joe, we'll start with you.
Thank you. How do you measure success of school?
How do you measure the success of a school, of this, this?
All right, good question. I, in my, my work, I would measure success of everything, right? There's nothing we do, we don't do, first thing we do is instrument measurement, otherwise you can never know if the feature, a experiment works or not. To measure success of a district, I would say, I've tried, tried, I'd like to be at quantitatively measurable as possible. I would say the, I can think of is obviously graduation rate, right? And the, the rate of high school student that admitted to college, maybe even high school student when eventually graduated from college, I think that's probably also a factor from the high school education, like how, how high school has prepared them for the college education. I think we should also measure, like, the, the, the other curriculum, other than academic, right? We can measure the, the clubs we offer, we can measure the varsity sports teams that we, we offer. Obviously not measuring wins and losses, that's not something that's really important to, for the, for sports team to win. But like just the number of students who's participating in sports, right? And number of students who's participating in, in clubs and maybe number of students who's participating in multiple activities. I think those are important measurements for the students, the growth and student health. And then, I think we can, I'm not an expert, but there should be some kind of measurement of the mental state of the students, like on, on the happiness of the students and who's, and the pressure level, the mental pressure level of the kids we have. I'm not an expert, I think those are measured usually by survey, so not as scientific measurement, but I think broadly, if we have hundreds of kids, we can measure, have consistent way to measure it year by year. I think that would be a good indicator, at least if, can measure if we're improving or, or we're not be able to improve. So those are, I said a lot of things, so those are things I can.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Lindsay?
Yes, can you just repeat the question?
Sure. How do you measure the success of a school district?
Of a school district, okay. So I think some of the things Joe said, I would say too, is they're easily trackable. You can measure success by graduation rate. You can measure success by how many kids attend college. I think a lot of parents in this district would probably measure the success by how many kids in our district get accepted at top 20, top 50 schools academically. I would say, to counter that, how are we providing opportunities for our kids who don't want to go on to higher education? Are we setting them up for a career in some sort of, you know, photech kind of school? And I know Glen Rock has opportunities for kids to do that during the day and leave the school and go to Hohokis School for different kind of skills set. So I would, you know, in a less data-driven way, I would say, what are the opportunities for our kids that the school district gives? And the numbers and richness of those opportunities is another way to measure success. I think like the international travel that a lot of our kids get to go on in high school, I think the sports programs, the robotics, the ability to really delve deep into becoming a kid who is exploring different ways of, I, there's this analogy that was used with a college counselor that a lot of my clients use, but like colleges, and I think this is analogy for the world, look for pointy kids, kids who have a lot of deep interest in things. And, you know, which is so hard because when a kid is 12 and 13, they should be exploring and figuring out these things. And so a school district that provides them the opportunities that provides them the opportunity to do robotics, to try sports, to try drama, to try, you know, all of these things, the ability to give our kids those experiences is, to me, one of the biggest measurements of success. And I don't know, other than numbers of those things that you have, or the enrollment of the kids in it, how do you measure it? It's, maybe that's a soft measurement, maybe there's a hard way to measure it, but it's really those opportunities that we give our kids to really figure out what they like, who they are, is, to me, the biggest driver of a successful school and a successful school district. And that can start from kindergarten all the way through senior year. And I think another measurement of success, obviously, what's driving part of that is the people who come and do those things with the kids, right? So the teachers, the quality of the teachers, the satisfaction of the teachers so that we can retain those teachers, all of those things lead to a successful school district.
Great. Thank you very much. Sanjeev, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good. I, I think this is a very open-ended question, and each person has their own way of selecting, you know, hey, the sports, the football, or hockey, ice hockey, or, you know, how many AP courses we offer and so on. But I think I, I go back to the basics, and that's what I, that's what I believe in. And again, what I said, you know, I rate the district based on they put the student first. That's the key. You can have AP courses, you can do all other things. But if you don't put student first, you're not moving in the right direction. And the second bullet point, and I said that, you know, it's school district that takes, you know, basically a whole child approach to the education. There are different popular student population in this, in the school district. You have to address everybody's need. Somebody wants to be, you know, take three AP courses, two AP courses, someone, they don't want to take AP courses. You know, that doesn't mean that, you know, that we, the school district is not doing well. And I also see that, you know, the board used to have, or I think you still have, the qualitative and quantitative, you know, as a board member, we define those goals, and that's how you measure. If the board is moving in the right direction, that means the school is moving in the right direction. If the board is not moving in the right direction, school will never move in the right direction. And that is the critical thing as a school board, policy-making body, that you need to make those policy-making policies perfectly. When you're evaluating the curriculum, you're reviewing the curriculum, you take the textbook home, read through it, look at what, what is in the curriculum, connect with the, with your superintendent, assistant superintendent, curriculum director, ask questions. I think that's how you rate the school district. I also think the retention of the educators, I think that is key. But, you know, look, anyone who gets a few thousand dollars more in different district, they are going to leave. I left jobs, I moved job, one job to another job. I don't think leaving, some teachers will move because they're looking for a, you know, whether they want to go from middle school to the high school, or high school, they want to the principal, or, you know, for different reasons. And I also think the school district, you, you should rate, you know, that we safety and security of the kids, regardless of your race, religion, creed, and whatever you are. The school district responsibility is to provide a safe place. If you are giving AP courses and you cannot provide safety to your student population, you're failing. So you get the many criterias that you have to look at holistically, a bigger picture, put, put those things together as a board goes, you make sure that you're addressing those things. And it's a very open-ended question, and, you know, everybody has different thing. But, you know, I think safety, security, addressing bullying, you know, those are key, 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 you know, key points. You don't want your son and daughter or kids to come home being depressed. You know, COVID has changed, you mentioned it, like, COVID has changed a lot of things. You know, I, I feel that sometime, my kids feel that, you know. So we need to take a different approach and make sure the school district is approaching, you know, taking much more holistic approach to every student needs.
Thank you. Chan?
Yes, I think, you know, it goes back to a lot of what everyone here has said, and focusing on the whole child, the whole student, if you will, and how do you measure, take that and measure the school district's success, you know, just taking some notes and really, really building on what everybody said. But, you know, the, the, the whole student is an academic-focused, socially-focused, health, mental health-focused, activity-focused. So there's, there's like a piece, a lot of pieces of the pie here. And some of it can be data-driven to measure the success. Obviously, there's state testing, there's, you know, something I'm more familiar with these days is the New Jersey graduation, I think I wrote it down, proficiency assessment, because I have high school kids. And, you know, looking where we stack rank against like districts, you know, where are we against like districts, size-wise, community-wise, opportunity-wise, from a data standpoint. So that's really one element. And that, you know, is something that's measurable, and I think pretty valid. The other piece is a little bit more hypothetical in terms of surveys, surveys in terms of, this climate surveys, for the students and for the parents. And where are they measuring the school district's success, from a student's standpoint, from a parent's standpoint? And, and then again, ultimately, measuring the success, as we've talked about with the teachers and the administrators, and where do they feel the success is? And is, how is that measured? Is that measured based on retention, exit interviews, curriculum? There's a lot of different pieces to this. So I think it all plays into the big picture, but I think it ultimately comes down to fulfilling the needs of that whole student.
Great, thank you. Christine?
Thank you. So yes, 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 all these metrics are very important. Everything everyone said, I echo it all, retention, everything, the, the scores, those are all the numerics that are in play, and we can measure it and see the data. Yes, very important. There is also the emotional and social component to it. The, you know, socially, do the kids feel that this is, they were, they were happy to be at the school? Do they feel that they were well-served? Are they, do they want to come back? I mean, you can even look at reunions, do kids come back to their reunions? That tells you how they feel about their school. I will say, on an emotional level, when you're, you know, ultimately, we're serving the student. And it always struck me when I went to college, that there was, very long ago, there was this one requirement we had at graduation, and we had to swim two laps. The reason that that happened, because somebody went through college, four years of studying, and then the next day after graduation, they drowned. And the school said, you know, we didn't do this kid justice. We did not serve this child well. We, we educated the child, but we didn't give the child the tools to operate in the world. And that is something that, you know, we and Glenrock should do for the student. If we have a student who is ready, is suicidal, and, and, but we saved that kid, and we had the emotional and mental services there for the child, and the kid stabilized, that is a success story. That is a success story. If we have a child who is a gifted and talented child, but we never put that child in any classes, that challenged that child, that is not a success story. So each, it's such a, there's such a breadth in this question here. You can't pinhole it on a metric, it's really for each child, and how we serve the child. And, you know, so the metrics, how, how, how do we do as a district? You can ask each student, it's hard to do, but how does a student feel about their education is ultimately what it comes down to.
Thank you very much. Sharon?
I'll be starting with you, Ms. Brown. How do you believe the Board of Education can best support students, teachers, and staff?
How can the Board of Ed best support students, teachers, and staff?
Yes.
Well, I think that comes down to, and the Board of Ed, listening, you know, figuring out what are the things those stakeholders need, asking questions to kind of further understand what those needs are, and then setting goals to kind of figure out how to solve these needs, solve these issues. I don't know, to be honest, what that looks like from a day-to-day for all of you, but I think that's where it has to start, is just offer support in listening, questioning, and figuring out how the resources of the school can best support whatever those needs are. If it's students who, you know, don't have classes that they want to take, how do we get the teachers in the school who might already have the expertise teaching those classes? How do we find teachers? How do we find room in the budget to provide for another course, if that's what students are looking for, and that's what students want? Same with teachers. If teachers need more resources, how do we find it in the budget? What are other resources, where, where else can we get the money from in the community? Who can we ask? What are those kind of things that we can do? I think it really comes down to listening, questioning, and thinking through what the right problem solves are. And if people are being listened to, and, and, you know, being heard, and there's a give and take there, I think that's all the support, you know, the basic support you can give somebody.
Mr. Ori?
All right, so would you repeat the question again?
Oh, of course. How do you believe the Board of Education can best support students, teachers, and staff?
So, again, I'll say it again, you know, the Board of Education is a, is a policymaking entity here. So whatever policies that you make will have impact, negative or positive, to, to the whole district, that includes student, staff, and administration, right? Each student, you know, it's a different population, student populations, you need to offer diverse curriculum courses to, so each student has the opportunity to take whether, you know, whether they want more AP courses, or they just want more, you know, not calculus, but algebra, or there's some students are more into sports and things like that. So all opportunities should be given to the student population. Teachers, I think they are the backbone of this school district. And I think as a Board of Ed, I will, what I will do is, like, you know, make sure they have the right tools, they have the right training to help that student population. You know, she mentioned a very good point. After COVID, you know, I've seen a lot of kids, my friends' kids, they are, they are going through some, they are going through some issues, and we need to address that. And sometime, it's just maybe, you know, spending extra hour with the students after the class and see where they're struggling, and the teachers can help. Administration-wise, I would say too, that's the Board of Ed. We need to make sure that we provide the right feedback to the administration, whether it's coming from the community, or we having a community forum where we make sure the, you know, public, the Glenrock residents, they have the opportunity to raise their concerns, and give that feedback, an honest feedback to the, to the administration, and to the Board of Ed. Hey, this is working, this is not working, we need to take corrective action. And that comes back to the Board of Education. Hey, you know, you're right, we take your point, we'll take a corrective action. That corrective action may take months, two months, six months, depending upon what, what the situation is. But I think this is where the Board of Education, each board member is critical, that they raise their voice, what they hear from the public, bring it to, bring it back to the, to the board, and see, you know, hey, this is what I'm hearing, we need to take some action, corrective action, communication. There's, there is no way out. You, you need to make sure you, we're listening to our parents, the teachers, and, and the student, what they want.
I think, kind of picking back off of what you said, but I think the Board of Ed supports the students, the teachers, the staff by being good listeners. And I think that's ultimately what's most important here, is to, to listen, and to make informed decisions, to do, you know, your homework, to do the research, to ask the tough questions. I think personal experience can play into it a little bit. We've all had attachments to the schools or the community for different reasons, but I think ultimately, as a board member, you have to step back and really look at the district as a whole, and all the different needs. So I think it's really about asking the right questions, and, you know, looking to make common sense decisions that are in the best interest of all, which is obviously never going to be easy, and it's never going to be fully possible. But I think if you strive for that, and you have the best of intentions, then, then you're showing your support through your actions.
Thank you.
I'm going to echo the same answer. It's listening. I've said this before, it's, if you ask people how they are doing, how they feel, they will tell you. If you ask the staff what they need, they will tell you. If you ask students what they need, they will tell you. If you ask teachers what they need, they will tell you. I've spoken to a number of teachers and asked them, how are things going? And the, it's never one-word answers, it's full answers that, you know, and you'll hear how things are going. And beyond listening, it's letting them know you listened, and letting them know that you can, you know, you take action, and you are trying to do what you can to help them. So the board, the board is, you know, sets the policies, and they're also there as a conduit for all three. It's, it's like an equilibrium. And it's, it's listening and working as hard as you can to implement their ideas, the feedback, and what you can do in the policies, within the policies. Thank you.
Yeah, because I have a lot of time to think, so. And also because I kind of calmed down from the, the initial nervousness of this format. So I think, I think, kind of similar to everybody said, but then I think, I would say, three points, not three points. One is to get to know the details. I think from my personal experience, to be able to do a job of supporting the team, I got to know the details. I got to really understand the problems, not just, just like, on the, on the surface, listening to what they have, and then make quick, quick decisions. You got to really dive into it, spend the time, understand the details. Second point, I think is, is, I think that, my opinion, the advantage of the board is, because we kind of have, like, quite a few members from all corners of the town, everybody bringing their perspective from, everybody has, family have different needs, some, right, some, some, some family, we may really care about sports, some family may really care about robotics, whatnot. So I think that, I think that's a strength of really act as, as community member, and bring the feedback from all corners of the community, make sure the thing we make is comprehensive, and represent the need of every corner of the town. And the third point, my third point is to do a good job of supporting. We talked about earlier of how to measure, measure the success, right? So for me, the first step is set a great measurement. But once we set measurement, periodically we have the checking, has to hold the executive accountable, and, and be honest to ourselves, did we achieve the goal we set? If we didn't achieve the goal, we should specifically think about, what did we do wrong? How can we improve? And make sure we set the next goal, maybe the goal is wrong, right? So, so make sure we set the proper goal, and have a plan to achieve it. So to hold people accountable, either the school or ourselves, kind of, I think that's very important, too.
Okay, I'm going to start with Mr. Ori. Board decisions require collaboration. How do you work with others who may have different viewpoints or priorities?
Well, that's always a challenge. You have nine people, different, different viewpoint, but that doesn't mean that you cannot have a, you know, frank, honest, trust-based conversation among, among each other. Having a diverse opinion is not a bad thing. You listen, you may agree, you may not agree. But again, the bottom line is, you have to follow the board's ethic, which I have the sheet with me. You know, there's nothing out of it. You know, that, that, that is your guiding principle. You can't go out of these principles. You have to listen, you don't have to be disrespectful among ourselves. I've been there 12, 12 years, people had very strong opinion. But again, as we said, like, it's all based on the data. What data do you have? If you're telling me I need to do this, this, and this, provide me some data, right? I'll, I'll go with that, I will review it, I will, I'll support you. But having diverse opinion is not an issue, it's just respect is a big, you should always respect your board members. It's a thank It's a thankless job, okay? You are here because you believe in the community. You believe that you can make a change as a, as a board as a whole, and you should respect the diverse opinion. There's no need to get into name-calling and, you know, things like that. I have seen that when I was on the board and I didn't like it, I was shocked. I was shocked when that happened to me. And after that, I, I stressed that, look, it's good to have a diverse opinion, but you need to make sure you're respectful. You want me to go this way, you need to share some data with me, I will analyze it. I will see if I can vote yes or no with that. But trust, respect among the nine board members is a critical thing.
Sure. Thank you.
Board decisions require collaboration. How do you work with others who may have a different, who may have a different viewpoint or priorities?
So I think it's important to find sort of common ground. And, you know, it goes back to having the discussions, hearing all the different opinions, and sort of finding the common ground in all of that. Because I think ultimately we're, anyone that's volunteering and giving their time and on a Board of Education is, we, I, you know, I know the goals and the missions and the focus statements and it's all written. I think it's, you know, for the most part, the, the plan is aligned. Everyone's on the same path. So I think it's really collaborating with the different opinions, being a good listener, as I talked about earlier. Negotiation, they've given the takes, you know, there has to be some checks and balances with that. But I think, again, if it's built on trust and respect and if you're all focused on moving the school district in the right direction for the students, ultimately you should come to consensus or, you know, some sort of consensus that can be agreed upon.
Thanks for the question. I had to laugh at this question because my first instinct was, oh my gosh, this happens all the time in my household. There's like a million opinions and everyone is not on the same page. So I guess, you know, you can, everyone, all, we all have kids and know that scene. I also laughed because I have a Greek business and if you ever dealt with Greeks, they're, they could be hot-headed and there's a lot of differences of opinions. And I have a lot of Greek vendors, I have vendors in Greece and it's, they're very interesting calls and emails. But I've actually had this experience with a board. I worked for 12 years or I volunteered for 12 years with an orphanage in Guatemala and dealt with the board there. And there was a lot of hot-headed personalities on the board. I wasn't on the board, I would work with them extensively. But I, you know, it was interesting to see. The best way to handle it is to try to diffuse it. You just stick to your goals that you're doing. You, you work through it, you present rationally and reasonably. And usually the people that are the hot-headed ones, you know, they, they settle down and you just work through it. As Jen said, you're working for a common goal. You're trying to, you bring your data, you bring your information, and you just keep your, the light at the end of the tunnel in focus. Thank you.
My house, my wife always writes, so we don't do that. But the board, I think it's very different, right? I, as I talked earlier, I think it's a strength of the board to have different perspectives, to form, have different priorities. So personally, I think having different opinions is valuable. I think feedback is gift. If everybody agrees all the time, probably we don't even need a board, right? Why do we, why are we here? So I think it's good. Obviously, needs to be respect each other, right? I think it's important to always assume good intention. No matter how heavy you debate each other, we understand the intention is for the common good. As long as it's not true, I think people should express their opinion and hold strong of opinion and debate each other. Try to find consensus, obviously, but make sure everybody understands we're coming from debate each other. I think that's my plan, fine. At the end of the day, we have, if I'm not mistaken, we have a odd number of members, so, right? So at the end of the day, I think it's a sandbox. At the end of the day, I believe a decision we made, which is also important, is once this decision is made, if you are not on the side that's, you are not on the side that was winning the decision, you just, you got to disagree and commit, right? As a collective decision of the board, even though I debated it, I would commit to execution of the decision. If there's a next opportunity to present a opinion again, I'll do that again, I'll fear to debate again. But once this is made, it's a collective decision. So in my opinion, different opinions are good, we should debate different opinion. But then, once this is made, everybody just focus on the common goal.
I think, excuse me, it's important to remember it's a small sandbox. We're in a small town and you got to play well together. So even if you have different perspectives on how to get to the same goal, I think it's important to remember that we have the same goal. It's providing a really great schools for our kids. And, and so I think if you can, you know, keep that in mind when there's different perspectives in the room and take your ego out of it, you can, you know, try and figure out how to build consensus and align yourselves in a way that kind of gets over that hurdle of those different perspectives. Hopefully cooler heads prevail and it's not an emotional thing and that's why it's good to take your ego out of it. You can't control how other people are going to react, but I know I can do that and I can control myself. It's what we teach our kids. And so I think, you know, that's what you have to do. You've got to listen to the others, you've got to know your, your end goal is likely aligned, but how you get there might be different. So how do you, how do you figure out how to soften those edges? By listening, by asking the questions, by working together to achieve the goal.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to start with Ms. Cass. So the question is, how do you envision the relationship between the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the school administration?
How do I envision it currently or how does it work?
How would you like it to work? How would your, yeah, what is your vision of how the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the school administration work together? What's ideal?
Ms. Cass, would you please turn on your mic?
Yes, of course. You know, we are here to really work on the policies at the recommendation of the superintendent, as I understand it. You know, I've done my little bit of research in terms of Board 101 and sort of how we are designed to serve, what our role is and what our role isn't. So I know ultimately that, you know, as I read on that 101 sheet, you know, our only hire would be a superintendent. That's where we only have a decision-making, for example. So that is ultimately who we are supporting in that. That's ultimately who's bringing us the policies, who's working with the, the school administrators to bring to the table to us. So in that regard, you know, I guess for lack of better words, the superintendent's the middleman, the middleman, middle woman, and we are the board of the arms supporting at that interest. So that being said, I guess, you know, we are the group that is designed to, to listen to the recommendations, to, to challenge the recommendations, to do our own research, to ask the right questions. So that's where we support the process. And that's sort of how I envision it. Obviously, I haven't served on the Board of Education, but the research I've done and the information I know is, that's how I see it fit.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. So there's definitely the role of the super and the superintendent and we have, there's definitely overlap that happens. And yes, there's, there's two separate entities, but they would overlap in many situations. I mean, if you take like any new facility that's being brought or any built or any renovations that are happening, you would go in them together. If you're applying for grants, if you're applying for bonds, those would be done together. Legally, you know, on the legal end, the Board of Ed is representing the community for any legal policies. You know, there's definitely a separation there, but, you know, I, I think ultimately you're, you're working together in so many different areas to move forward. The board's trying to move forward in different areas. You look at the preschool, you're working together with the superintendent hand-in-hand on this. You did speak at the last meeting about the trust that you have to have in the superintendent to implement, make the right decisions and in the staff. And, you know, you, the board has to have, you have to have faith in each other to make that happen. So it's, you know, it's an equilibrium between the two and, but there's so many different things that are covered and voted upon that there's, there's a lot of overlap together. So it's, you have to be in, you know, a team together.
I think the relationship is the superintendent and the school administration. Their job is execution. They are the experts, they know how to teach, they know how to do the things they've done for many years. Maybe some of the board members are, but probably majority are not real education. At least I am not. But the board's go, right, the role is to set a vision and, and make the right hiring decision for, I assume, right? On that high level. But then, I would envision the interaction would be once they made, made the right hiring decision and set clear vision and goal, measurable goal for administration and hold them accountable. But don't try to get involved into the actual execution because that's, I don't think that's the role of the board and I don't think that's the expertise of the board as well. So that's how I look at it, is to set vision goals and measure them, hold them accountable.
Yeah, I mean, all that is correct. The, the, I think of it as a corporation, right? Like the superintendent's the CEO, the board of trustees, the board of directors. The superintendent runs the day-to-day, hires his officers, hires his staff, runs the day-to-day of the school. We're there to sit in the oversight seat, make sure to hold those parties accountable where the checks and balances, when you're on a board. We have to do our due diligence, ask the right questions, you know, confirm that resources are being allocated properly, nothing's being mismanaged. But I think in, in an ideal world, that relationship is one of collaboration with accountability, but that it's a team moving toward the same goal. And again, the board's role in that is protecting the stakeholders and the stakeholders and the situations, the students, the community at large, or protecting their interests and holding the CEO accountable, holding that superintendent accountable for the decisions they make on a day-to-day and reviewing them and asking the questions to make sure the processes are being implemented the way the board and the, and the community would want them to be.
Excellent question. Most people come to the Board of Ed with a, with thinking that, you know, I'm going to come to the Board of Ed, I'm going to make this change, this change, you know, you know, sorry. You have to, there are, there are boundaries that you have to work with. Board hires, that critical responsibility is to hire the right person as a superintendent. I went through four of these and including the current one. And people who are there, they know I ask very difficult questions. I was told by the board member, hey, you know, just calm down, but, you know, but, but that is my job to ask difficult, tough questions, so we hire the right superintendent. We, as per the books, you know, superintendent reports to the Board of Education. We do his evaluation and everything. But at the same time, you will also have to make sure you don't throw your superintendent under the bus. You have to provide tools, open communication, and that comes from, you know, we are the representative, we are working in, with our neighbors in football or soccer, whatever we hear, we need to tell the superintendent, look, this is what we are hearing, you know, look at it. Don't go out as a board member and promise, yeah, you're right, you know, I'm going to work with that, yeah, that educator needs to go. You can't do that. So sometime you need to protect your superintendent. I give you a very good case when we were going for a full day kindergarten. We went through a lot of trouble. But it was the right decision by the board to protect the superintendent because it was the right decision looking forward where we want to take the district. It may not, because the public may not have all the information. They may be thinking, you know, what are you doing, your tax dollars, who's with the budget and everything? But again, it comes back to, you are on the Board of Education for one and only one reason. Making sure you get the best education, you're protecting every child every day. This is nothing personal here. So you need to work with the superintendent, your administration, to make sure there's no egos between us, there's no miscommunication amongst the Board, Board of Education. And you make sure that you set the, you work on the district goal with your superintendent. So you can quantify and qualify at the end of the year how your superintendent did. You are also responsible for evaluating your superintendent. Don't be afraid, don't be afraid. Write down what you, what you think he or she is not doing or what needs to do. We as a taxpayer, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure the district is moving in the right direction. But you have to make sure that you work with your superintendent and don't look for an opportunity to throw your superintendent under the bus at every moment that you get.
Thank you. And finally, what do you consider the most important qualities for a successful board member? And what would you consider to be a successful tenure if you are selected for the board? To start with Ms. Pearlance.
I would, I kind of waver between two answers. Empathy would be one of them and, and being thorough and intelligent in your decisions is the other. I, I think to be a successful board member would take commitment. I know you asked for one, but many flood to my head. Commitment, this is a job. I, I see how hard the Board of Ed members work. I see how much time goes into it. It's not a, it's not a light task and it's a commitment. And so I feel that a successful Board of Ed member would be someone who's extremely committed, has the capacity to really go through a lot of information and take it in and make smart decisions and do it with empathy. Because there's a lot of, we're talking about people at the end of the day. This is all about students, teachers, staff. Everybody's, you know, a human being here, we have our parents. There's a lot of emotions that are involved, too. So those, that would be the quality, I think, that would make for a successful Board of Ed member stepping into this role for a long term. It's someone who has a vested interest in this community and somebody who wants to invest the time to learn. This is all a new role, you know, you, there's a, there's a ramp-up period to learn all the ins and outs. Just researching and studying and, you know, preparing myself for this interview. I've learned so much, leaps and bounds. I actually had a lot of fun listening to your board retreat. I just, I, it was, the amount of, of ideas that are, you know, planned for now, for the future, are incredible. So the long-term success of someone who would be in this role for going forward would be someone who's committed to those, planning through these ideas and executing on them. Thank you.
And I just wanted to make sure, for the benefit of the group, what would you consider a successful tenure for yourself, assuming that you would get the board position? Like meaning, like just personalize it.
Oh, personal, personal goals?
Like within the next year, what would it look like for you to consider that, wow, you know, 2026 is here, I completed it, I made a difference. What, what does that look like?
I'm sorry if I misunderstood the question. Similar, I would want to get very well-versed in all the different, you know, that's everything that is on the plate today and that's going forward. Best practice, I would, for me, knowing best- Best practice, I would, for me, knowing best practices to being a board member, I would hope to be ultra-familiarized with the budget from top to bottom in detail. It's, I would find it successful to be at participation in all of the meetings and to raise my voice as needed, even as a new member. I would not hesitate to raise, raise my voice. I don't think I'm a very shy person, as my friends would probably tell you. But, you know, do so in a researched way where I speak when I, when I have no, you know, when I've listened and, and digested the information. I would find it successful if I could contribute in a positive way to this board. And I don't know exactly how that means because I don't, can't predict what decisions are coming down the pike and what happens in closed session. You know, I don't know. But if I could contribute in a way that benefits this community, benefits our schools and helps the community at large and the kids and the different, all the different elements that are, there's like a million balls that you, that the board is juggling all at once. And if I could contribute positively, I consider that a successful 2026 Board of Ed role. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think the most important quality, by the way you describe, is dedication. It needs to be, everybody, a lot, a lot of us have a full-time job, right? It's really passionate about the mission and dedicate, not only time, but, but, but the, right, the thinking about what we can do from, to make the school district better, thinking about what we can do to make the student's education better, like that's in your head all the time. That's the dedication I'm looking for. Second question about my personal, what would, can you say is successful? I think I talked about earlier, right, I have a little bit of my personal goal, what am I going to do? I think if my, I would consider successful if we are able to make a, move to a direction, prepare our students more ready for the future that's ahead of them, right? Just, just, you use one example, not sure if everybody read about the recent, just came out, Nobel Chemistry Prize winner, is a 30-years-old computer scientist. So he has used AI, basically solved all the chem problems. So the chemists, scientists are out of job now. So if the kids who loves chemistry in high school, they need to rethink about it. They, they won't have, they wouldn't have a job anymore. This is going to happen to other domain, other area as well. So I just, I think about how can we prepare our, our students to the future like that, right? And it's going to be happen fast if we can think about it.
Thank you. Well, first I'll just say thank you for having us here tonight and, you know, this is just another example of all the hours you guys put into helping run our school district. Qualities I would think that make a good Board of Ed member would be a team player, somebody whose instinct is to put we over me and ours over mine, somebody who's slow to burn, because they know it can be hot out there, and just somebody who's a good listener, thoughtful, ready to problem solve. I think the tougher question there is what would a meaning, what would a, you know, successful tenure look like in my perspective? I feel like those goalposts might change if you're sitting in your seat. So very generically, you know, like they were saying, it's just some way to feel like I walked away contributing meaningful things to the conversations and decisions that happened in that year that will help our students and prepare them for the future.
Thank you.
Tough question, again, like you, you measure it yourself and people measure you differently. But I was thinking, I think, a couple of things comes to my mind. Number one is, you know, as a tenure, I want to make sure that I attend all the Board of Ed meetings. I make sure I read all the agenda before coming to the meeting. If I don't understand anything, I send email to the board president or the superintendent, hey, I need more clarification. So when I come to the public meeting, I know why I'm voting for each resolution that I need to vote for. And the other one, the critical one is listening. I'll make sure that I listen to the parents, administrators, the teachers and staff, what their concerns are and how can I help them as a board. That's one. And do not compromise on safety and security of the, of the students, your staff and your teachers. We're living in a very, you know, different environment. We need to make sure that we are paying attention to that. Other one is, you know, don't feel under pressure when it comes to the vote. If you're not clear about something, ask the right question, get the clarification or just say, you know, I don't get it, I don't feel comfortable, vote no. You don't need to come feel pressure that everybody's voting yes and that's why I need to vote yes. I think I see that, I learned that lesson on my 12 years on the board. Be the outlier and vote no if you don't get it. And the last one I want to say is, you know, stay cool. That nine people, different thought process, diversity in personalities, stay cool, no need to have, you know, lose your cool for something. We are all residents here. When I leave after a year, I want to make sure I, I made more friends on the board rather than, you know, hey, you know, he said that, she said that. That's the key thing. After a year, I want to make sure the schools are running well. Safety and security is a big concern to me, always been. I want to make sure nothing happens while I'm on the board.
Thank you. Ms. Casper. Yes, I think the, one of the key characteristics of a good board member is, you know, everyone's mentioned, is someone that's committed to the process, committed to the community, to the students, to the entire operation of it. I think if you have that commitment and it comes from an intentional good place, it brings along the characteristics that should come with it, you know, such as the integrity for the decisions, the communication and so forth. I think if your commitment's in the right place, the rest will, will follow. You know, I guess personally for me, stepping up to finally get involved in sort of a more, sort of out in the open position, you know, as having a seat at the table, is something that I would be proud of after taking so much from the community and from the schools and sort of giving back. I think it's a great example to my own four kids that, you know, things don't come easy. You got to put yourself out there in uncomfortable situations. So, you know, that's something that I would be committed to do if chosen to be on this board, is to kind of put myself out there, get involved in the decisions to continue to move the district forward for the next generations.
That was intense. Yeah, that was a bit intense, right? I mean, I, I, I know that it's difficult to be up there and, you know, we all, we, although we have to do it a couple times a month and some of you may not be familiar with this kind of situation, but we really appreciate you putting yourself out there today to do this in front of your community and as well as like get the community to also know you a little bit better as well because we are all still members, we're still going to bump into each other in the grocery store regardless of the outcome for today. So first and foremost, thank you. And I, I personally can say that I think that any one of you would be able to fill this role and be a successful board member and, and so thank you for that today. I would like to open up public comments at 8:37. This is a public meeting and at every public meeting, there's an ability for public comments. The comments are not there to ask you random questions. This is, the comments for the public are to make statements. And I know that normally you, you are all on this side of it, so this is an example of that. No, you know.
You're going to love it.
Yeah, so at 8:37, I would like to open up public comments for any community member that has something to say about agenda items only. All right? At 8:38, we are closing public comments. All right? See you now you know, now you know. At this time, I need to, someone to make a motion to recess to close session, right? Ms. Scarpelli seconded by Mr. Corey, sorry. And at this time, we're going to just have a closed session and deliberate. And after we deliberate, then we'll be able to return back into public session and deliver, you know, the news and go from there. All right? All right? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. All those opposed?
All right, we're all good? All right. Can I have a motion to go back into public session? Ms. Scarpelli is seconded by Mr. Corey. All right. Before we go through the process of the nomination, is there anyone who wanted to say something?
That was really hard, so thank you all for putting your names in for this opportunity. We had no idea if we would get any applications and get five strong candidates was great, but also very hard. We were in that room for quite some time, and you're all great. I hope anyone who does not maybe get this tonight considers running next year because I think you'd all be an asset to the team. So, thank you.
I just want to echo what Stephanie said. You're all excellent, excellent candidates, and I really do hope that you consider running for the Board of Education next year. And this is what makes our town great and our country great, the democracy. So, thank you for participating in this and putting yourselves out there.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, can I have the nomination for our new board member? Ms. Stevenson?
It's a motion to nominate Christine Paralamis for the board member.
All right. And do we have a second? Ms. Scarpelli? All right.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Ms. Carasola?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Be it resolved that the board approves the appointment of Ms. Palmaras to fill the unexpired term of Elizabeth Carr effective October 17, 2024 through the reorganization meeting tentatively scheduled for January 5, 2026. All right. Motion, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. All right, Ms. Carasola, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. All right, all those in labor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No abstentions. All right. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.[1766.01][1766.01](LAUGHTER)